Welcome, everyone, to the regular City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 21st. Officially start the meeting at 6:00 PM. Start with a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Sorry. Next, we'll have a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zapcounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, February 24th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, February 25th at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is Item B, Agenda Approvals, Additions and/or Deletions. Is there anything from the City Council? That's correct. Okay, seeing nothing, I'll move on. Next is C, Presentations. Subject Proclamation, Rare Disease Day. City Manager.
Mayor Vandenberg, members of the Galt City Council, I'd like to present Dan Schockley, and we will be presenting a proclamation for Rare Disease Day to Mr. Schockley. And I'm going to read through the proclamation and start with whereas the nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare in the United States according to the National Institutes of Health. Whereas each of these diseases may affect a small number of people, rare diseases as a group affect almost 30 million Americans. Whereas many rare diseases are serious and debilitating and they're debilitating conditions that have a significant impact on the lives of those affected. Whereas while more than 450 drugs and biologics have been approved for the treatment of rare diseases according to the FDA, millions of Americas still have rare diseases. Whereas individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, difficulty finding medical expertise, and the lack of access to treatments and ancillary services. Whereas while the public is familiar with some rare diseases such as Lou Gehrig's disease and sympathetic to those affected, many patients and families affected by less widely known rare diseases bear a large share of the burden of funding of research and raising public awareness. Whereas thousands of residents of California are affected, those affected by rare diseases, since nearly one in 10 Americans have rare diseases. Whereas the National Organization for Rare Disorders, that's NOR, organizes a nationwide observance of Rare Disease Day annually on the last day of February. And whereas thousands of patients and caregivers, medical professionals, researchers, companies developing orphan products to treat people with rare diseases, and others in the city of Galt participate in that observance, now therefore be resolved. We are proposing this for your approval. The City Council of Galt, California, does hereby proclaim that the last day of February will be annually observed as Rare Disease Day in the city of Galt.
Do we do accept that? Approve it? Does it require a vote? No.
Supervisor Pat Hume wanted to be here as well, but he's got conflict tonight. But he had also sent through a couple of proclamations as well. So, Mr. Schockley, I will let you address the council.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I want to thank you for sponsoring this Rare Disease Day proclamation on behalf of NOR. I was diagnosed with a rare disease 11 years ago this May. It's a hereditary colon cancer syndrome, which I remember a couple of months ago I was here for Ostomy Awareness Day. As a result of my rare disease, I ended up having an infarct at Ostomy. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and I want to just be able to give back to the community, be a source of inspiration and encouragement for those who hear about my journey or read about my journey. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That would be great. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read the statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Right now, we have three public comments. The first is Ken Lee.
I want to come up with a senior veteran housing rights upcoming, but then we can ask for the Citywide Plus service route, you know, to go from these streets and senior center, library, New Hope House, Walmart, State Farm. Right now, with the dollar ride, it's an appointment-based ridership. It's only good from point A to point B, but a dollar, $25 a pop. Usually during 7:00 to 9:00 AM, students use it, and again, 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And so it's inconvenient for senior youth because that time's blocked, taken up by students. There used to be a Citywide route prior to here, but it was discontinued because of lack of ridership. But the new influx of the senior veteran housing department coming, it's something to plan for for the future. Students have a monthly discounted pass, but not for seniors. It's $75 a month for dollar ride where the students, they have that. Budgets are very tight for the senior, and a little bit goes a long way. My second topic is unhoused in Galt. Basically, they need to conform to society. If we had a brochure regarding rules in Galt such as litter control, camping do's and don't, areas where it is off limits to camp. Right now, South County Services is a resource center for them, with bus fare rides, morning breakfast, food pantry, and a social advocate on their behalf. And we want to know if you ever consider the community court, where misdemeanors are heard, and it helps communicate the law between the violators and the police. If a person wants help, they get rehearsed. So it educates them in the right and the wrong, and it tries to work out solutions at times, here their side and here the city's side. In San Francisco, businesses have a no trespassing sign ordinance posted, given the police permission and their ability to move people along while open or closed. And that was enforced for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Greg Davidson.
I was, without addressing certain members of the city staff, I was hoping that I could get an update on the two previous issues I've spoken on with Mr. Heinz regarding exploring when they made cannabis dispensary to the city of Galt and with the chief of police speaking about improved animal services. Today alone, on just one city of Galt, a Facebook page, there were five lost dogs running around. If just one of those runs out into traffic and causes an accident, or if somebody swears to miss a dog running down the street and heaven forbid it hit a child, it's going to be a tragedy. So we really do need to press the county. I know the chief has been working on that, but I was wondering if maybe the council could reach out as well and maybe put a little extra pressure on it. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Madison Delbrug.
All right. Hello again, Mayor Vandenberg, Vice Mayor Sandu, and City Council. I am Madison Delbrug, President of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I want to start by thanking all of you for taking the time to meet with me over the past couple of weeks regarding our Visit Galt proposal and the events that occurred at our last meeting with city staff. I sincerely appreciate you hearing me out and providing feedback on the proposal. I now want to give you a quick update on the progress we've made in refining our plan, analyzing and crafting our budget, and researching ways to best deploy our Visit Galt initiative and destination marketing efforts. We are taking an abundance of care and time to make sure our plan is realistic, executable, and effective in supporting our businesses in the best way possible. So far, we have reached out for and received an estimate for a travel impact study to research Galt visitor spending by accommodation and commodity type, industry level employment and earnings, and all local and state tax collections. The study would also provide us with overnight visitor volumes and average traveler party spending estimates. We have reached out to Sacramento International Airport and gotten figures on a herd-on-the-street cow display, as well as static image displays. We have reached out to a couple of billboard advertising agencies and received figures and location availability on billboard advertising opportunities. We have also verbally secured a fantastic location in downtown Galt for a visitor's center and potentially a conference room as well. We have started to search for a full-time, permanent executive director to lead the chamber and facilitate all of the components of the chamber's mission in the Visit Galt initiative. All of this can be made possible by approving our plan. We are currently working on refining the financial instability plans featured in our proposal, thanks to some recommendations from some of you, and we are diligently working to fine-tune the plan and invite council members and city staff to provide their input so we can finalize it and make it a plan that's beneficial and acceptable to all of you, the city, and our local businesses. Our goal is to deliver a second draft of this proposal at the next council meeting, and we would like to be put on the following agenda. So please, if you guys have any questions or concerns or feedback on the proposal, please reach out to me anytime, and we can work on that so that way it's agreeable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is E, Reports from City Council Members on Regional Boards, Communications, and Committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend that Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on February 9th. Have you appointed a independent taxpayer oversight committee member? A whole board was looking for the person a long time. His name is Jose Luis Cesariz. He has a lot of experience. The second thing I would like to report, this end of state of the emergency, so we have to, in starting next month, we have a personal meeting, so I have to drive to Sacramento for that meeting. The other comment I would like to, just the information, it might be Mike Selling, know about this SB 1 Local Partnership Program. And back in January 26, 27, 2023, there is a meeting. The board approved $4.3 million by SB 1. But there was between City of El Grove, City of Rancho Cudobas, City of Sacramento, and Sacramento County. But there will be another $2 million is anticipated to be approved by CTC for the city of Citrus Heights, Folsom, and Galt. So I would like to, Mike Selling, when you see that, please guide me or give me the direction when that agenda item came in. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papinow.
Unfortunately, the cast meeting on the 13th was canceled due to a district schedule and rescheduled for later this month, and I won't be able to attend due to work travel. So I believe the mayor's going to try and sit in for me as an alternate. So I was disappointed because I was hoping to get a little update on the fentanyl awareness education program we had talked about before, so hopefully that'll come in the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Just as Councilman Papinow mentioned, our cast meeting was canceled until March. And other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano.
I have a lot to report. As you know, I missed last meeting, but I'm going to abbreviate things as to not bore everybody. But I did want to update you on the League of California Cities Conference that I attended January 18th through the 20th. It was a very, very well attended, very well done, good refresher from four years ago. There were, I attended part of the conference, took care of some official training that I had to, we all have to have, the harassment prevention training for supervisors and officials. So got that knocked out, which was good. And then a really good seminar on how to use Cal Cities and how to be more active in Cal Cities so that we can bring things back to the city. And so as part of that, I've joined the Tax and Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee for Cal Cities, and I'll report on that at the next meeting. But it's a way, really, to get, you know, our needs into Cal Cities so that they can advocate at the Capitol for us. There was also a really good conference, I'm sorry, seminar on advocacy, effective advocacy in key city issues and how that integrates with Cal Cities at a state level but also a regional level. And they talked about how we can connect, you know, multiple regions so that we're not duplicating work. And where that came up was the homelessness issue and how cities are addressing that. And so Cal Cities is putting a lot of pressure on the Capitol to do something about that. And I just want to briefly go over something. On December 14th, the Executive Director for Cal Cities sent a letter to Gavin Newsom related to the budget, and there were two real main points that she brought up as part of the policy that Cal Cities is using. One is finding a home, a permanent home in the budget for homelessness and affordable housing. As we all know, that's been a priority for the governor, but locally, there doesn't appear to be that much has been done. And he's used, the governor has used that homelessness and affordable housing funding as leverage, in my opinion, in the opinion of many at Cal Cities. So that was one ask. The other one was that as part of the budget moving forward into the may revise even to safeguard local revenues and support local governments' fiscal sustainability. So one of the points is that they're really trying to get the government down there at the Capitol to start reimbursing us for unfunded mandates. And I'll read this real quick paragraph. Cities are also still waiting for the state to reimburse the nearly $1 billion it owes to cities, counties, and special districts for state mandated programs. Local governments have diligently carried out crucial unfunded programs for many years and failing to pay these costs will only create greater financial instability and threaten the ability for local governments to fund essential services to communities. And I would like to just add to that. In our meeting, I added that not only have we followed through with the state mandated programs, but many of them are on the backs of our local residents, meaning through fees and fee increases that the state is mandating. So I'm real happy to report that that's the kind of direction that they're going in, that they're really taking a pretty aggressive stance. This letter, and it can be seen on the Cal Cities website, was also sent to the Senate Budget and Fiscal Review Committee and a bunch of people that have some influence on that budget. And so hopefully, even though that we're facing $22 billion shortfall allegedly, that we'll start to see some of that come back at some level. And again, I don't know that we'll get $1 billion, but certainly, they need to be aware that they can't just keep banging us for everything they want us to do and then not paying us to do it. So that's that. And then I did also attend a SAICOG meeting, and this, I promise, will be the last one. But we are starting to go through the process of doing the long-range planning for our sustainable community strategy and our transportation strategy moving forward. By law, it's supposed to be done by December of 2023, which is a year from now. The SAICOG staff has asked an assembly member to carry a bill to see if we can give an extension for that to 2025. And the reason for the extension is, and our SAICOG board voted on this, is that we want to do more outreach and we want it to align more with our mega-region partners. So instead of doing things in a silo, just in our region, transportation, as you know, affects everybody. And so we have had a partnership, mega-region partnership with the Bay Area and San Joaquin and that whole corridor. And so what we're asking is that the state allow us to have an extension for a couple of years so that we can do two things. One, align the timing of our plans with theirs, but also do significant public outreach about what people really want in transportation and housing. And so that bill is being carried. It's AB 350, I believe, and I've asked the city manager to look into seeing if we can get on our agenda a letter of support for that to go to the Capitol. And so we may be seeing that next time around on our agenda. So I will stop there. I do have more to report, but I'll do that at next meeting. And I appreciate the opportunity to go to the Cal Cities Conference. I'd encourage all of my colleagues to do more in the Cal Cities so that we can start to bring some of that stuff here. That's it.
Thank you, sir. I attended the CGA meeting. There was still some discussion about funding and the pass forward, that, and as well as reaching out to more farmers. A lot of farmers, when you send them a survey, they throw it away faster than you do at your home. So it's a bit of a challenge because they're busy working, but that's all we covered, really. I'll thank Mr. Lozano for consolidating the next item with his previous report, and we'll move straight on to F, Information and Consent Calendar. It is recommended that Items 1 through 4 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the City Council. Is there anything by the City Council for any of these four items?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item F4 for discussion.
F4, okay. So if there's nothing else, I would like to, do I have a motion to receive file warrants for period ending in February 8th, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting for February 7th, 2023, and 3, adopting ordinance 2023-01, adding Chapter 18.70, Urban Lot Split, and 18.72, two-unit projects to the Galt Municipal Code exempt from SEQA under Public Resource Code Section 65852-21 subsection J and 66411.7 subsection N. Do I have a motion?
And Mayor, public comment too before the motion.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
So do I have a motion?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Councilman Papinow, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. So remind me, please, this, Item 4 gets moved to the, right now, or to regular business?
It's usually taken up the first item, I think that's what I recall.
Okay, so, thank you, sir.
For the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize, Mr. Heinz and Mr. Selling was not, was with the holiday weekend and kind of worked on this right up to the last minute, that's one of my questions. So just from my understanding, and for those of the public maybe that we're talking about here, so in 2020, we bought a building, Enterprise Court. The purpose of that building, the purpose, sorry, the purpose of the purchase of that building was to use as ultimately a replacement for our corp yard, which has become very outdated over by the railroad tracks. And we were either going to have to build a new facility or this was the option where we could buy a building for what we thought would be obviously a better deal for us to do that. And it has existing tenants, which we continue to have, so we're generating revenue off it. Am I right?
Yeah, I think this is on, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, Councilmember Fire, just a clarification, it wasn't for the corp yard, it was for the transit operations and maintenance facility. Yeah, it does have existing tenants, and we're collecting rent from those tenants.
Okay. And remind me, I didn't have enough time to research that, but just roughly, you don't have to figure, but what do we roughly collect on that from our tenants per month?
That's a good question. I think it was around $120,000 a year, roughly. I could verify that and get back to you later, but that's my.
Okay, that's, I could remember.
Yeah.
So fast forward to tonight, so, and again, the purchase price of the building, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, that's public record, I mean.
Yeah, it was roughly $3.7 million.
$3.7 million?
Correct.
Okay. So tonight, we're being asked to pay, to be approved of roof repair. So the...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize, Mr. Hines and Mr. Selling was not, it was with the holiday weekend and kind of worked on this right up to the last minute, some of my questions. So, so just from my understanding, and for those of the public maybe that we're talking about here, so in 2020, we bought a building, Enterprise Court. The purpose of that building, the purpose, sorry, the purpose of the purchase of that building was to use as a ultimately a replacement for our corp yard, which has become very outdated over by the railroad tracks. And we were either going to have to build a new facility or we, this was the option where we could buy a building for what we thought would be obviously a better deal for us to do that. And it has existing tenants, which we continue to have, so we're generating revenue off it. Am I right?
Yeah, I think this is on, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer, just a clarification, it wasn't for the corp yard, it was for the transit operations and maintenance facility. Yeah, it does have existing tenants and we're collecting rent from those tenants.
Okay. And and remind me, I didn't have, I didn't have enough time to research that, but just roughly, you don't have to figure, but what do we roughly collect on that from our tenants per month?
That's a good question. I think it was around $120,000 a year, roughly. I could verify that and get back to you later, but that's my.
Okay, that's, that's, I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
So fast forward to tonight, so and again, the purchase price of the building, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, that's public record, I mean.
Yeah, it was roughly $3.7 million.
3.7 million?
Correct.
So tonight, we're being asked to pay, to being approved of roof repair. So the, the staff report states that we've developed some leaks and that these leaks need to be repaired. You don't want to repair them, but you'd rather just replace the roof. It mentions how when we bought the building, there was a report, inspection, purchase inspection that mentioned the state of the roof and that $400,000 roughly had been kind of earmarked for future repairs should be needed based on that report, correct?
Correct.
So was that report given to, because I don't recall seeing that, but was that report given to, and I know, Mr. Attorney, you weren't here then, I think it was your predecessor, and I don't think that Mr. Hines was here either. I think that Mr. Haglund was the city manager. I don't recall that report given to us. I don't think that was a closed session meeting, but.
It was an internal inspection by our facilities maintenance staff, correct?
By our staff? Okay. Okay. So my concern here is that I get that, I'm assuming that 400,000 was earmarked for repair. The report said that the roof was aging and that it could need, basically, right?
Correct, yeah. So at that time, the city engineer at that time, Mr. Clarkson, worked with our facilities maintenance staff to generate an estimate for a substantial repair to the roof, not a replacement. And that's what was programmed as the $400,000 CIP project.
So now tonight, the bid that we're getting, and I, and I actually did reach out to the City Attorney and ask about the piggyback bidding, to refresh my memory on that, is basically roughly 1.15 million dollars, right?
Correct.
So my concern is that, I mean, I don't remember the 400, I don't remember the report stating the 400,000. I think I would have remembered that and maybe we could have drove a better bargain had we known that the roof was going to need 400,000 in, I mean, two years later. But with that being said, we're now being asked for three times the amount that was earmarked. So it leads me to believe, one thing is our report, our inspection was severely inadequate. Or, I mean, what I'm struggling with here is it just feels like that's a huge, it would seem like a good deal, doesn't seem like such a good deal when we're, we've only owned the building for two years and we're having to pay roughly one third of what we paid for the building just to put a roof on it. And secondly, why are we doing the roof? Why are we not just doing repairs?
So, yeah, maybe to answer those questions, I guess, I would characterize it as, again, it was a heavy duty repair that was estimated at the 400,000 for 2023, roughly three years ago. And now we're looking at a full roof replacement. So what has happened to, basically to, you know, justify what we're asking for now is essentially, at that time, I mean, you can't see what's underneath the roof. So you, you know, they do it, they look at it and, you know, make their best estimate based on what they see. So, but with the severe storms that we've had, I mean, there was a significant section that was torn off. We had a contractor come out and do repairs about a week and a half, two weeks ago for $7,800, just to repair that small section that literally delaminated. And when I say delaminated, I mean, if you can think of layers, there's a membrane on top of essentially a wood substructure. And so that membrane was literally popping off from the winds and stuff pulling up, you know, the staples, the fasteners, if you will, that are holding that membrane to the wood substructure. So that's something that no one could have foreseen, the winds and the severe storms that we had. And so looking at that now, doing an inspection from underneath, we can see there are certain spots where the water damage, you know, is going to require some substantial repairs. So it's not just a, you know, patch a portion of the membrane type job, which is what the 400,000 was. This is cost effective wise to do the whole thing at once. Otherwise, you're just going to be essentially playing a game of, you know, fixing as things pop up, so to speak. So that there's a cost effectiveness to doing the whole thing at once. We do have the Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility project that's coming up. It's going into final design later this year with construction in '24 planned. And so it's appropriate to, you know, be prudent and, and repair or replace the roof now rather than let the damage get worse where we have to start replacing sections of that substructure.
So to better educate myself, I did some research and I talked to some building owners that have similar sized buildings, and we were talking about roof repairs and spoke to a building owner in town who owns one of the other buildings over there, it was 2007. And they were told a recent inspection, their roof was probably had at least 10 years left of life on it, and that roof was from 2007. So I just, I understand we had damage. Again, I just, I'm, the bidder for this project is from Ohio, is that correct?
I would have to verify that. I'm unfamiliar with where they're from, but Garland has done work for the city before. The PD roof was the most recent project that they did.
I just, you know, based on the research I found with the K A roof, I had to like educate myself on what that is and stuff, and hearing from this other building owner when they had some stuff done, it just seems like the square footage for the material, it just seems really high. And I'm not saying, I'm not, I know that people move numbers around, it's the overall number, but I think my real problem here is that I just feel like, you know, it seemed like a good deal three years ago, we're going to pay a significant amount of money to have a roof put on. I know maybe our guys aren't roof experts and maybe they didn't, you know, identify how bad the roof really was in need, you know, they were, you know, obviously because we missed, we miscalculated by a lot with the money. But also, you know, that we only did, we did piggyback bidding, so we didn't go out to bid for this. We actually just piggybacking onto a bid that was already done. You want to explain that again? Just?
Yeah, so the piggyback bidding is a public contracting code allows for what they call piggyback bidding. And what that means is, say, another city or county or agency did bids for a similar type project, that any other city or county that's in the system, and I think there's three of them, but they can basically piggyback off of that bid to use that company to basically save the process of going through a formal advertising and bidding process.
So I know we always, in our staff reports are told, you know, if we don't do this, what the repercussions would be. I know that the ultimate goal would be to have whatever needs to be done to the roof done before the winter season next year, although it's only February now. There was mention in the staff report that the roofing industry is seeing significant pricing, you know, increases and stuff right now. So what also concerned me too is that we're going to make the bigger expenditure with numbers being really inflated right now, because I feel like inflation is probably driving all that. I just feel like we're buying something at the most unopportune price time. I get that you're, you're worried about later spending, but I think my, just my biggest problem with this, and I just say this to my council, is that I just, this is a lot of money. And piggyback bidding is, at least from my research, traditionally hasn't done something on this size of a project. I mean, I could be wrong, but that's what I was told. I just, I would feel more comfortable with just bidding. I know the last time we did this, we were actually able to save, you know, quite a amount of money on a bid, which was significantly smaller. This is a large amount of money. And I would like to see, you know, really have someone come and, did the, correct me if I'm wrong, did this company actually, has this company that gave us this number, had they actually set foot on the building and looked at our building and said, and then came back to a bid, or they're just basing it on the square footage and local pricing and stuff like that?
I'm going to look at our city engineer. Yeah, he said they did visit the site, yes.
Okay. And so my, so again, I, I'm just concerned with, with awarding this to, without going out to bid. I feel like if we ask people to sharpen their pencils, that I think we could maybe get a more competitive price. I just don't, I just, I don't know. I just feel like we don't, I, I just, I'm struggling with the fact that if I would have been told when we bought this building two years ago, that we would have been spending a million dollars for a roof, that would have been highly, that would have really been factored into my decision on that at the time. I'm disappointed that we're now, because if I bought an investment house for 300 grand and my referrer came and said, it's going to be 100 grand for your roof, I'd be like, wow, that wasn't such a good deal after all. So I know we're not buying this to flip it, but it was an investment. And anyways, that's my thoughts on this. I, I just, I, I don't know that I would be in favor of approving as is. I would like to see it go out to, to a formal bid process myself, but.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. I had some of the, I had some of the same concerns, but I'm curious, you know, just for public knowledge, the city is also required, we can't just run out and buy the lowest bidder. We have to pay union, union wages or prevailing wages, right, which is, as everybody knows, is not cheap. And this is not a standard roof. Maybe you could explain a little bit the type of roof and the square footage of it?
Yeah, the building is roughly 50,000 square feet. And so the type of roof on these more flat top buildings, PD is another example, you have a parapet wall, which is essentially, the wall sticks up further than the roof. And so you have the roof level, and there's basically a gradual slope over to side drains. And there's a membrane, think of a, maybe your trash bag times 100 thickness plastic membrane that's overlaying a wood or particle board type plywood type substructure. So that, that plastic membrane is sealed under all the seams, and that basically provides the water protection for the structure.
And this is a 50-year roof, 10-year?
So we're looking at a 20-year warranty on this particular product. The building was built in 2003. It's been about 20 years now, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions by council?
Mr. Mayor, just for the clarification, Mr. Selling, as you said, we are very much doing for cost effective. What I'm talking about, I agree with that roof is leaking, we need to repair it. That's not the, but if something comes up my mind, the piggyback contract. What was the reason to piggyback if you have a cost effective, a wicked bid, normal bid procedure? And there's a lot of company, they do this kind of roofing. We recently done with that, so I'm, and what was the reason, just only staff time buys? Because might we get when the cost effect of, like in this bed does not can show to the public and showing me what will be the other company, if the other company came in, what kind of difference? I'm not talking about the lower bed, but sometimes you get the same quality with the two wedges, so you can be a good judgment call which one I will be a cost factor.
Right. So I think I understand the question, Vice Mayor. So the difference between doing a typical bid process where either our staff or a consultant would prepare plans, specifications, and engineers estimate, we would advertise it for a period of time, typically, you know, three to four weeks or so, open bids, and then basically evaluate the bids and award it to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. That does take time, and so staff time is a factor in all this. So we look at cost and, and again, as a small agency with limited staff, having done a project like this recently in the PD, the, you know, the, the staff determined that the, the best route, in this case, it's a pretty straightforward roof. I mean, you're talking one big flat building, so it's pretty straightforward as far as that goes. So in that respect, then, do you really want to spend the time and effort to develop plans, specifications, and estimates? I mean, we've got a lot of projects on the books and we've got a younger staff that we're trying to train up, so to speak. And so it was felt that this was the most cost effective use of staff resources is to go this route. And again, having had a recent project in the PD roof, that we saw that this bid for this vendor was competitive already, so.
So so how you can see the comparative bed, this cost will be the better comparative bed on the other side? This is just the staff specialty, a staff vision can see, okay, this bed is most comparatively, as we also include the staff time, but you feeling this bed will be most cost effectively than the other beds?
Correct.
That's, that's it, that's, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Selling, do you remember how much it costs to do the roof on the PD? Was it a similar roof or is it a different kind of roof?
It's similar. It had, I mean, it's obviously smaller and it had quite a few penetrations, meaning there's different equipment on there. PD has a lot of these individual HVAC units, so there's more penetrations, which means it's, you know, it's, it's less, less efficient for the contractors to install it because they've got to cut around everything and seal everything. This roof has very few penetrations, so it's a little more straightforward, you know, scale of economy, if you will, production jobs, so.
Do you happen to recall what the cost was on that and how big the PE, PE, the PD building is?
I'd have to go back and look at that. I don't have that. I don't know. I'm going to look at the city engineer if he has any, no. Okay, we'd have to, we'd have to research that and get back to you.
I'm just curious, cost per size versus, you know, and that was done like what, last year?
I believe it was, yeah, about a year, maybe a little over a year ago, yes.
Did that project go out to bid or did we piggyback that one?
I, I think that we piggybacked that one too, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to go back.
I wasn't able to pull that staff report up.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Public comment for this one as well.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
So back to the motion.
I'll move to approve the motion. Approve the contract.
Motion made by Councilman Pompano. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilman Lozano?
I would like to make an alternate motion that we reject the proposal and put it out to bid through the normal process.
It's alternate motion made by Councilman Farmer. Is there a second on the alternate motion?
Can I ask the question before?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Selling, for example, if we go back to the contract, looking for some kind of cost factor, what will affect because the rainy season almost gone, right? So what, what do you think, what can be the negative size if we don't prove tonight?
I mean, it essentially will, we'll go back, if that's the council's direction, and put it out to bid the normal way. It, it will probably affect some other workload, delay things kind of thing, because a roof is, you know, something that we can't push back. So I would have to work with the city engineer and his staff to determine what that impact would be, but it will, it will have some workload impact, yes.
Can I, can I ask you more question, Mike? I'm sorry. And I failed to ask this. Does, does the, did the contractor indicate how long it was going to take the work to be performed once they got started? Was that discussed?
Yeah, usually they specify what the timeframe is. I'm going to look at the city engineer and just.
And then with that question, while he's looking, if it was to go back out to bid, that's like a 30, I mean, once he gets out to bid, it's a 30-day process before you close the bids and that's, so I know you have to prepare to go out to bid and whatever. So would, would two months be safe that if we had to go back outbid, it would maybe take two months before we could actually have a bid back?
Yeah, I would say typically the process, it's about a two to three month, you know, just factoring in the timeframes for, you know, going through the, the process, if you will. You know, the other, the other things about it are certainly, you know, as you touched on a little bit, Councilmember, is you don't know what the, you know, what the market is going to do, you know, in the future, obviously. Typically, the construction market, this is the time you get optimal bids, when you bid work early in the year before the construction season starts. So contractors don't have their schedules full and that kind of thing, they're looking for work, and so you tend to get better prices now. You go out in two to three months and, you know, you could see some price increases. We obviously don't know, you know, what other, if there's any supply chain issues to delivery of the material, those kinds of things. So, so just giving ourselves some additional time, if you will, before the weather, you know, comes in the fall is, is also what we're taking into account here, so.
Was Mr. Griffin able to locate a timeframe? Do you remember how long it took to the PD roof? I mean, I don't see four months. It seems a long time.
I think PD roof was probably around 60 days or so, which 60 working days, so 20 working days a month roughly, so you're talking about three months for that. So, and again, that was a little more intensive work because of all the penetrations on the roof. I would hope that they could do this probably in, you know, 40 to 50 days, so probably two to, two to two and a half months or so.
All right, I appreciate that. And just regardless of how the, the vote goes on this, I just want you to know, I'm just looking to get the best value for the taxpayer dollar.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not our money. This might be the best thing that you're proposing, but I'm just, like I said, I'm always looking to get the best bargain, so thank you.
That is absolutely our motivation to a staff, so thank you.
Okay, so on the table is a motion to accept as is and alternate motion to send it back out to bid. Is there a second on the alternate motion? I will second that motion. Can we have a roll call on the second motion, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
No.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. Next is scheduled matters of public notice, which appears there are none, and move on to regular calendar. Finance Department, subject, the City of Galt Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending in June 30th, 2022, Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications.
Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications for the Communications for the Year Ending June 30, 2022. Independent Accounts Reports on Compliance with Position 1112021-22. Appropriation Limits Increases Independent Auditors' Report on Compliance Reporting, AB 3773.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for reading that mouthful. I just wanted to add that the the AB 3773 report was handed out tonight. We just got that back from the auditors today, so that was the last thing for the audit that we were waiting for.
So this, this was not what we read in in the front and back end of the financial report in the packet?
It's just one little handout. That's in addition to the packet.
It's an addition?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I'm happy to present our Fiscal Year 2021-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report tonight. I'd like to acknowledge all the staff time that goes into this. They they put in a lot of late nights and weekends and implemented some new GASBIE pronouncements, and were able to prepare the financial statements with no audit findings, which is a first for the city in the last few years. We'd also like to recognize staff and other departments that put in work to get this done also. It's, it's a lot more than just pushing a bunch of numbers into documents, and we wouldn't be able to do it without the help of all city staff. And although the the ACFIR is a lengthy document, I'll try to keep the presentation short, but if you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll be happy to answer them. The city's ACFIR is audited by the CPA firm Lance Sol and Lunghard. We refer to them as LSL. And they issued an unmodified opinion, meaning they didn't have any issues with the the statements, and there were no audit findings when they reviewed our internal controls. So the ACFIR is a comprehensive document reflecting the financial position of the city operations and its related component units. There's three main sections, the introductory section, which includes the transmittal letter, which is mostly what we'll cover tonight. There's the financial section, which includes the independent auditor's report, management discussion analysis, the basic financial statements, notes to the financial statements, required supplementary information, and the fund financial statements and schedules. And at the end, there's a statistical section, which includes comparison for the last 10 years. Moving on to the citywide highlights, total assets increased $16.2 million, or roughly 5.9%, mostly due to increased cash balances. And it also was boosted by the inclusion of leases in the asset category, and that was a requirement to implement GASBIE 87, which was new for this fiscal year. Total liabilities decreased $8 million, or roughly 12.9%, and that was caused by a decrease in the net pension liability. That's based on the actuarial valuation for the the city pension plans we get from Calpers, which factored in some higher-than-expected returns for Calpers. Total revenues increased $2.3 million. It was largely to tax and intergovernmental revenue, so our property tax and sales tax had a good year. And we also received some grants. Our total expenditures increased $3.5 million, or roughly 9.8%. And the primarily driver for this was an increase in capital spending on parks, and that included a little over $1.6 million at Walker Park. And the remainder of the increase was allocated through programs and operations throughout the city. So the big picture is the city's in a better position at the end of fiscal year 22 than the previous fiscal year. Looking at the general fund, we had revenues of $15.5 million. That was 6.4% below, or roughly 1 million below our budgeted estimate. That was due to delays in recognizing intergovernmental revenue. We're required to have the matching principle, so we recognize that when we have the expenditures. And a lot of that was ARPA funds that had been approved, and the actual expenditure occurred after fiscal year 22. And the other driver for that is the change in fair market value. So that's a book entry we do at the end of the year, just to show what the actual value of our investments would be if we were to sell them at that point in time. And I just want to point out, it's just a book entry, so it doesn't mean that we're losing money on investments. Currently, interest rates are increasing, which if we were to sell our investments now, you wouldn't earn the the book value. So so long as we keep them to maturity, then we'll still continue your interest, and there'll be positive investments. Expenditures were $14.5 million, which was 22% or roughly 4 million below the budgeted estimates. And the big factor of that was the ARPA amounts that were approved, but the actual payments or completion of those projects occurred in the next fiscal year, and that's when we booked those expenditures. The general fund balance increased $3.2 million, roughly 22.9% to $17.3 million, and that includes $131,000 for non-spendable items, which is inventory or prepaid items that we have. We have $4.7 million in committed. That's our reserve policy. Unassigned is $4.1 million, and those are amounts that are constrained only by city actions, so those are mostly the carryforward amounts, so encumbrances or capital carryforward that we bring forward to the next year. And then the final category is unassigned, which is $8.4 million, and that's available for use and doesn't have any restrictions on it. General fund continues to support deficits in parks and recreation and the lighting and landscape districts. We continue those to occur in the future, although some of that will be alleviated with the Measure Q revenue that's has the spending priority to support those areas. The Parks and Recreation Fund had $4.6 million in revenue, and the the proceeds from the market contributed $1.4 million to fund parks and recreation programs. They, Parks and Rec Fund had expenditures of roughly $5.1 million. And then due to the timing of the GASBIE 87 implementation and some other year-end entries, the Parks Fund shows a negative fund balance of $181,000 for fiscal year 21-22. And that's just the unassigned balance, and it's just a timing issue, so that'll be trued up in fiscal year 23. So it looks funny on the report, but it's, it's okay, and it'll be corrected in the next year. I just want to touch on some of the GASBIE statements that were implemented in fiscal year 22. The the major one was GASBIE 87 leases, so that changed how we report leases. So we used to just report, you know, for properties at the city's leasing, we would report revenue that we received in that year or amounts we paid for items that were leasing, and that was the end of it. And now you amortize that out and show deferred revenue or deferred outflows. So we were really happy, staff did a great job implementing that, and we got that done without an issue. And GASBIE 89 was effective this year, and that's accounting for interest incurred before the end of a construction period. And we had to evaluate that, but that didn't impact our financial statements this year. And I just want to report for the single audit is required. Any year you have more than $750,000 in expenditures for federal awards, and for fiscal year 21-22, we did not meet that threshold. And that's a little confusing because we were awarded, I think, roughly $6.3 million in ARPA funds, but we only, it's only when we spend that money that it's subject to the single audit, so we anticipate having that in the next fiscal year. But for 21-22, we did not meet the threshold, so we did not have to complete the single audit. And then I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions?
Okay, get off with a couple of questions. I'm sure we all have lots of questions, but I'll just ask a few of mine real quick. So just, just a broad overview to understand, so our liabilities went down 12.9, and our assets went up by 5.9. So just simple, and again, I'm not an accountant, so. So assets versus liability were basically a gain of 7% reduction in our liabilities, right?
Yeah, so our assets, so it's a better overall financial position.
Right. On the expenditures, it says that they increased by 9.8, and our revenues only increased by 5.4. So there, there's basically a 5% decrease, so we're spending 5% more than we brought in. But you did mention that some of those expenditures being higher were one-time stuff you mentioned, so not really reoccurring?
Yeah, so those numbers just reflect what we, the revenue brought in for that fiscal year and the expenditures that we spent. And so if it's a grant-related item or something like ARPA, we recognize the revenue in the same period where we have expenditures. But there are some other items, like some of our gas tax or some of the streets items where we receive, say, $200,000 a year, which isn't sufficient to complete a project. So those, we receive the revenue, and those build up in fund balance. And then once there's a sufficient amount of revenue, we can do a project. And there's also a timing issue for, let's say there was something that was funded from the general fund that we just didn't, you know, the general fund had sufficient revenues through various taxes and other fees that we collected through the year, but that project wasn't completed until the next year. So the revenue from the prior year went to fund balance, which was utilized to pay that. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we're deficit spending, and it's an issue, that's just reporting, here's what actually happened.
Okay, yeah, because obviously ongoing, we wouldn't do that, but I understand. And then one last quick question, and I'll let somebody else go. So the $382,000 that we contributed from, from Fund One to Fund Six, the annual contribution that we make to, to, to pick up the the deficit for the Parks and Rec, basically was 382, that's actually significantly lower than than what it's been in prior years. Like, I think it was 800, like, it was been as much as a million when I first came on council, and then it was 800. Do you, do you think that's because, do you attribute that, that, that lower contribution to the fact that Parks and Rec didn't, didn't operate as much during that year because of COVID and all that, so they basically didn't spend as much? Is that why we didn't have to chip in as much?
Part of it is they had fund balance from the prior fiscal year, so I think that was roughly 240,000. And there was a restatement due to the leases that added an extra 28, 30,000 in assets. So that offset some of that.
Still 500 and something, though. I mean, still, still down. I mean, we still not chipping in as much.
Their revenues were, they're higher than they had been, but most of the Parks and Recreation Programs are subsidized by the city, so typically whenever we don't run one of those programs, there will be an overall savings.
And I don't have it right in front of me at the moment, but was the market revenue higher than the year prior?
I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was higher, because I, when I was looking at, I believe the, the contribution from the market to Parks was higher in '22 than '21.
All right. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Real quick, says part of the general fund where the balance went up over 3 million, part of that's due to capital projects that were not completed within the fiscal year. And are those then reflected in the almost 3 million that are assigned for capital replacement and projects? Does that just roll over into that?
Correct. So any, we evaluated the capital projects that were still outstanding at the end of the year, so it wasn't automatic. Anything that's still open got carried forward. We took a look, and we're trying to be realistic of what projects are still ongoing, what do we think we're going to complete in the next fiscal year? So then the remaining encumbrances and capital projects rolled into that assigned fund balance.
So it's a bump to the general fund, but it's still things that are assigned and.
Yeah, so we're, we're accounting its overall, where we have more assets or more equity in the fund, but we, we do show that as reserved for those items.
That's a really good point. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just for, on the staff report, page three, you know, there is, I, I know that the report is explained, but could you explain non-spendable 131,523? What's that fund?
Non-spendable items would be inventory. So that would be, you know, we, we have fuel at the central shop that we refuel our city vehicles with, so we keep an inventory of that. It'd be prepaid, so if we had paid for a years of insurance and only six months of that had transpired, then we've prepaid six months. So they're prepaid items or inventory, items that we have that have value, but you can't really go spend them.
Okay. And then what's the difference between committed and assigned?
So the committed, that's the economic reserve policy that the city has. So that's a formula that I believe it's a certain percentage of general fund and the parks expenditures we keep in reserve. So if there was an economic downturn, that's, we have a policy that says, you know, we set aside so much money for that. And the assigned category is, that's the amount that we rolled forward. So those would be the encumbrance and capital carryforwards. So we, we already have the funding for those, and part of the, the budget resolution allows for certain carryforwards. So we're, it shows that we're carrying that forward, so we have excess revenue for those items, but those don't go into the unassigned because we're, we have a use for those. So it's just a, a different designation for fund balance.
Okay. And the other, unassigned, 8.4 million. What's the difference, 8.4 million and 4.6 that committed? That's also rainy day, or what's that, 8.4 million, that's?
The unassigned is, it, it doesn't have any commitments on it, so you, we can, anything that you could spend general fund dollars on, you could use that 8.4 million for.
But we do have 8.4 million in the budget, right?
It's not in the budget.
It's reserved, so to speak, like a?
Like, a good way to think of it, if, if you're looking at checking accounts, so if you have a savings account for, for emergencies that you put so much in, so if you had some sort of economic emergency, that would be our, the committed fund balance. And then just if you had a savings account where you had extra money that you put into it, just to keep it aside from your other accounts, that would be the undesigned it. So there's no restrictions on how we spend it.
So so that means in the rainy day, that 4.6, we don't have no restriction. Same thing, 8.4 million, they have no restriction. We can use any?
We'd have to look at the economic reserve policy. If you wanted to use that reserve, there would be some restrictions or some actions that we would need to take to use the 4.6 million, whereas the 8.4, you don't have any restrictions. So if you wanted to approve something that we didn't have the revenue to cover in a given year, you could use that 8.4 million unrestricted.
I see the city manager would like to give some input?
I, I just wanted to just piggyback on Director Boring's comment. So if you look at the committed and you look at the unassigned, essentially the city has almost $13 million to keep itself afloat in the event that calamity happens. That 4.6 is there as a formal rainy day reserve, but those unassigned funds can be used, or unassigned funds can be used to help us out, I mean, for any particular purpose, but it's good to have those dollars there because you never know when an economic calamity befalls us. It also gives us the ability to keep growing that balance. I know of other cities that this combined balance could be somewhere between 25 and 30 million. And so the higher these balances are, and the committed is already set by a percent of, I believe, revenues, or a percent of expenditures, the higher those balances are between the committed and the unassigned, that makes us more viable financially to third-party organizations such as Standard and Poor's and Moody's when it comes to rating cities. Sorry if that was a little too geeky, but.
No, thank you, sir. Basically, what that means, we could spend it on something really good, but we would look like poor financial strategists, to put it roughly. But that's a good question, because I had some of the same curiosities. You have more, Vice Mayor?
No, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the, the hard work that's gone into this. All the questions that I have were either answered before or currently tonight. I just want to thank you for, you and staff, for the work that you've done in the finance department the last couple of years. My first two years on the council, we had some findings, and I don't know if technically they were significant, but they were significant to me. And two years in a row, we had the same finding, and that's now gone. And to have a report come back from the auditors that say, we're doing a good job, is, is refreshing. So thank you to you and your staff, and certainly the, the rest of the city's staff that helps manage this process by department or, or overall. So thank you so much for, for all of that.
Thank you, sir. I, I do recall those unreconciled bank statements. Yes, that's, it's nice to see those gone. So for myself, on, on page eight, and we're going to touch on something near and dear to my heart, long-term liabilities. So in the middle, in the middle of the graph there, under 2022-21, excuse me. Why does it always happen when I have to do this job? It shows long-term liabilities that it's actually decreased from 21 million to 14 million, which is quite nice and a little surprising in my eyes, in my eyes. Could you explain that a little bit for the public? that a little bit for the public? Because this is a common thing that's been brought to my attention.
Yeah, a significant portion of that decrease, it's due to the CalPERS valuations. So the actuarial valuations we get, there's kind of a lag. I believe it's two years, because it takes, you know, they need a full year to gather the data, and then pretty much a year to analyze it and produce the reports. So the reports that were used for fiscal year '21, '22 included years of higher-than-expected returns for CalPERS, which then lowers our long-term liability. So some of that sways, or a big portion of that depends on the investment returns from CalPERS. So in the next year or two, that'll probably go up a little bit. I know for fiscal year '21, '22, their actual investments, they had a loss of, I think, around 6%.
Okay, fair enough. So per our conversation, I think I framed it a certain way. I can't remember exactly, but because this is based on other people's investments, it's not necessarily wise to pay it down. We could take all the funds previously discussed and pay this off, but then CalPERS could do well again, and we would actually not have money that we could have in our coffers, correct?
Well, there have been years, in the early 2000s, I believe, where some of the pension funds were super funded, so they could come and say, "You don't have to make an employer contribution for these years because you're funded above 100%." Some other cities have issued bonds to pay off their unfunded liability, which is not recommended, because, just because your unfunded liability today is zero, doesn't mean that you won't accrue unfunded liability in the future, because it depends on a year-by-year basis of CalPERS meeting all their actuarial expectations. So one of the things we're looking at is getting some better forecasting tools and working with a partner to help us get better information about that, so we can tackle that in the future. Like, we know in the next few years, our unfunded liability payments that we have to make in that given fiscal year will increase just because they had investment losses. So we're trying to find a way to better plan for that, so it's not such a huge impact to the city when that occurs.
Sure. Thank you. Do you know how the city compares to other cities or counties percentage-wise, you know, having 14 million compared to our total budget? Are we in good position?
I don't know comparison. I know we're in a healthy financial position right now, especially with our pension funds are, you know, somewhere between 70% to 80% funded, which is pretty good. Typically, it's not common that all of your pension funds are 100% funded. I mean, that's always the goal to get them there, but we're in a healthy range, and we have healthy reserves. So the city's in a good financial position.
Very good. Thank you, sir. On page 14, the bottom paragraph, successor housing special revenue fund. It says there's $5.985 million in this fund, the fund balance to be used on future low, moderate income housing projects and et cetera. So can I get a further definition of what that means? Recently, the local church is, has, and I'm just using this as an example, has brought forth trying to create housing for veterans, et cetera, and the elderly, you know, and it's a good thing to try and stop people from being homeless. But is it adequate for that kind of funding, or is there special restrictions? And if you don't know the answer, I mean, that's cool. Maybe Mr. Splendario can be, you know, further assistance late after the meeting or something. I know I didn't speak to you earlier. I was just curious what, wanted to bring up that topic.
Yeah, that money is restricted, so we can only use it for those low or moderate housing projects. I don't know the specific projects that are allowable. We'd have to do some more research. That was the, kind of, one of the leftover parts when, from the redevelopment agency. So...
Could I please get some, that's fine. Could I please get some more information on that? I'd like to be fully up to speed on that. And then I think we touched on this, but I'm just going to say it for everyone's sake. You know, on the next page 15, last paragraph before the chart, it's kind of nitpicky, but the first value is given in percentages, the second value given in dollars, and it's not apples-to-apples, really, because it's one value from one column, the top, and then the second value on the very bottom. They could have easily slid over and just used the, either the percentages for both or the dollar value for both. And I say that because if the average citizen reads it, it's just more confusing instead of straightforward number-to-number or percentage-to-percentage. That's not really a question, just... I did have one or two more things, but this one here, so, excuse me, this is my last question. This is about ARPA funds. The city's allocated about, allocated 6.347 million to distribute it over two payments, 3.17 each payment. Over, in 2021, '22, over 4.5 million has been allocated. So that's in past tense, you know, the way I read that, to programs, including repairs, infrastructure, et cetera. So basic math, 3.6.34 minus 4.5 leaves 1.85. Is that a total of 1.85 funds that are free to be allocated for ARPA?
Correct.
Okay, so when the chamber discussed, it gave the impression that there was roughly 500 or 550,000 to be allocated, but that's not the actual number.
I can only speculate, but we allocated $1.3 million for the business recovery program.
Correct.
We only burned through about 750,000 of that. So I can only speculate that they were referring to the delta between the 750 and the 1.3 that we allocated.
Okay, that's a fair point. So does that give restrictions, Mr. Splendario, do you know, does that give restrictions on the other portions of that, or why, because of what the federal government has mandated?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't think I'm clear on what you're asking. Restrictions and...
Okay, so we were gifted 6.34 million. We have allocated 4.5 million. As the city manager correctly pointed out, we had a program for businesses of X amount of dollars. We gave a portion of that. The difference is what the chamber referenced too, but that still leaves a larger sum of money, roughly 1.2 or 1.3 million that's unallocated. So I'm wondering what the status of that is and what we can or cannot do with it.
Well, I'll just say, generally speaking, because the chamber item's not on the agenda tonight, so I'm not going to get into it.
No, no, I don't want you to.
But just generally, as far as ARPA, that, all of our allocation is in our lost revenue category. Cities were given a standard up to $10 million if they received up to $10 million from the federal government. We get a standard lost revenue calculation, so we don't have to do the, it's kind of like if you do a standard deduction versus an itemized deduction on your own taxes. At a certain level, the federal government just assumes a certain standard deduction, and you can use that if you're preparing your taxes. Works the same way with ARPA. If you have up to 10 million, you can get a standard deduction, so to speak, but it's not a deduction, it's just an assumption of a revenue loss. And as revenue loss, it can be used for general governmental services. So there is discretion in that for various, various...
Okay, so what I, what I'm understanding is that the city manager is correct, and the difference is for general governmental services per...
Yeah. Regardless of, that was our, we had certain categories that we planned the budget for, but all of it is under the, under that, the category.
Yeah, and I ask all this because, you know, as we move forward and make any budgetary decisions, it's important for me, anyway, to have a global understanding of
Yes.
what assets we have available in our hand. I believe that's the last question that I had for now. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I have some additional questions. Mr. Boring, I just want to refer to the LSL document, which we always get along with this. For the public, just to, so I want to ask questions so that the public understands what I'm asking, too. It's a lot of accountant jarbish in here, I guess I would call it. It can give you a headache trying to read the, but basically what we're given here is a document that basically states that they audit the Parks and Recreation Fund. For those of you who don't know, we have an Assembly Bill 3773, which specifies that all the revenues from the Parks and Rec properties are supposed to go to Fundo Six, only be used for Parks and Recreation purposes. There has been an ongoing, you know, this comes out in discussion every year with our budget, and there's always, you know, different perspectives or different opinions that, you know, we're not really using, sometimes maybe not using the money, because there's some gray areas and so on and so forth. But what I just want to touch on here quick is that, that it basically states in here that they did an audit on Fundo Six in reference to compliance with that Assembly Bill. So are we spending, is the city spending that money the way it's supposed to be spent legally? But every year, of course, and I understand, every year, we get the same document that says, "Our audit does not provide a legal determination of the fund's compliance with the compliance requirements referred to above." So really, this doesn't do anything except, and correct me if I'm wrong when put this in layman's terms, what this just says is when they audit that fund, that two, two plus two equals four, and so on and so forth. That's all they're looking at. They're not, they're not, they're not trying to legal interpret whether or not us using money for this is really the interpretation of the Assembly Bill. They're not trying to be lawyers and interpret. They're simply just looking at dollars and cents and seeing if there's any, like, somebody's, like, not, there's money missing, or something's not adding up, right? Am I right?
They're looking at the transactions to make sure that they're compliant, so it's not, like you're saying, a full legal determination, like they're guaranteeing there's nothing wrong. They take a sample of transactions, and based on the sample of transactions that they reviewed and their interactions, it's not just looking at the financial transactions. They also interview city staff and management to determine if there's any risk of fraud or anything else going on. So they're aware of the framework of AB 3773, so that's their report of, they took a look at that, and based on the transactions and information that they looked at, that we are compliant with AB 3773.
If I may, I think you make a great point. It's a valid point. I would also think it's fair to point out that in past years, they have consistently found unreconciled bank statements, and they no longer find that.
Right. I'm just referring, all I'm referring to, Mr. Mayor, is that I just, that we get this every year, and really, I just, and I get that they're not attorneys, they're just accountants, and this is really the scope of their work. But what you just mentioned, where they talk about, you know, responsibility, it says reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but not absolute assurance, and therefore is not a guarantee that an audit conducted in accordance with blah, blah, blah will always detect. So they're basically just saying, "Look, the best we've looked at, we can't see anything, but we can't, we can't 100% guarantee, but we think, based on what we're looking at, that there's no fraud going on in Fundo Six." Fair to say?
I believe there's a similar statement to the ACF and any of the other audits. There's, there's not an absolute guarantee that the auditors will give, but they're saying, you know, "We've done a sample." They rotate the different items they look at every year, and based on the sample information that they looked at, their interviews with staff, their overview of our practices, we're in compliance.
Yeah, and I'm not by any way saying that there's anything shady going on. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just simply stating the obvious for people that, because there is people that ask about this every year, the Fundo Six stuff, that, you know, really, what we, what we're getting is the best our auditors are able to give us, which is just their, their accounting opinion. They're not, their legal opinion. They're not there to weigh in on, on whether or not, you know, the cost allocation that we use is appropriate in the, you know, versus, and while mentioning that, we are still using a cost allocation method versus a direct allocation method when it comes to the central service costs, right, for Fundo Six?
Most of the central services are through the cost plan. There are some items, like we'll touch on in the budget. If you look at the Parks and Recreation budget, there's a Public Works Admin section in there, and that's a direct charge for staff allocation based on time studies that we do. But a lot of the stuff, like costs for finance, the city council, clerk, city manager, IT, HR, those costs go through the cost allocation plan.
And Matt, from your experience with other cities, and I know that you're a fairly young fellow, so I know you don't have, like, 40 years' experience in other cities, but, you know, you're in the position you are because you're, you know, you feel that you are very capable. Have you, is it more common for cities to be using cost allocation versus direct, and is that because just the man-hours that goes into using the direct, or?
The cost allocation is very similar. Cities, counties, the state, all use a cost allocation. There's certain costs that aren't very realistic to direct allocate. For example, a lot of finance, we have a person that does AP, so it would be tough for them to look at, "Okay, you know, I paid invoices that hit these funds, so, you know, on this day, I'm going to code my time a certain way." So we try and take all of that into account. Through the cost allocation plan, we have different metrics. So each central service department has a different metric that is ideally a way to say, "Here's how this division spends their time and how we should allocate that to other departments." So it's, it's not an exact science and a perfect, fair-dollar amount to everybody, but it's the, it's kind of a compromise of, we can get it done, and it's somewhat reasonable, accurate, verse, if you were trying to direct allocate everything, it would greatly reduce the amount of actual work we could do.
Right. I know that it seems to go back to, and again, you used the word somewhat. So again, and this seems to be the whole, that, that, that little point of contention with the people that have, you know, with the Fundo Six, whereas, you know, they're like, "We have an amount of money that's legally says you can't use that money for anything else." But in the past, people have said, "Well, the city, you know, uses a legal method, cost allocation, to dip into that. We don't think that, you know, they're appropriately taking them out." It's just a lot, the central service cost is a lot of money, and people have questioned whether, you know, 800,000, I don't know if that's an accurate number now, but in the past, 800,000, you know, 75,000, I think it was roughly, per month, is a, is a fair pull from Fundo Six for the other services. And so, again, I'm not trying to, we're not going to change anything tonight that's happened in the past. I'm only bringing this up because it's my duty to just mention what we've gotten from our accountants that says, and whether people believe in cost allocation versus direct allocation. I'm not a fan of it, but I understand the reason people use it. I think direct allocation would be far more accurate, but then again, what's the cost? Because it takes way more time and man-hours, and then are you begging penny-wise, pound-foolish? I get all that. So anyways, thank you for your questions, Matt, on that. That's all I had.
Anybody else? Is there, again, I'm going to ask again, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Yeah, I tried to build some muscle memory there. So with that, there's a recommended action to accept by motion the City of Galt's annual comprehensive fiscal report, ACF, for the fiscal year ending June 2022, men random of intent, control, and required communications for the year ending June 30, 2022, independent accounting report and compliance with Proposition 111-2021-22 appropriation limits increments and independent audit report on compliance with applicable requirements on the internal controls and compliance regarding AB 3773. And do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Move by Councilman Pompano. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Lozano. Is there any other motions? May I have a real call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next is City Manager's Office, subject fiscal year 2022, '23 mid-year budget projections and adjustments. I'll turn it over to Director Boring.
Okay, we threw some charts in to try not to bore you to death tonight. I can use the clicker. Okay, we want to start off by just giving some information. If you look in the staff report, it'll often reference the revised budget. And I know that's been confusing in the past, because, you know, council adopts the original budget in June, and the numbers that show up as revised budget now are different. So we just want to point out what the differences are. So the revised budget is comprised of the original budget that was approved June 21, plus the carryforward. So there's encumbrance and capital carryforwards that are authorized as part of that budget resolution, and those are items that were planned, or, you know, we worked with a contractor to get in place at the end of the fiscal year. And those are items that were planned or, you know, we worked with the contractor to get in place at the end of the fiscal year. And, uh, payments actually occur in the next fiscal year. So that just gives us the ability to continue operations and pay our members. Uh, and then any other budget adjustments? So, for example, if we brought something to repair a, a building or piece of equipment and we didn't have available funds, um, part of the budget resolution would be a supplemental appropriation to approve that. Uh, so I just want to point out that although the revised budget is different from the original budget, all of the items in there have still been approved by council. Uh, and then going into some of the changes. So on these schedules, the, not every single, um, like revenue line item is shown here. We're only showing the, the items that are adjusting. So if you were to look at the revised budget column, the amounts in the table don't add up to the total at the bottom. Uh, I just did that to try and make the numbers legible for everybody. So our secured property tax has a, a minor increase of approximately fifty three thousand. Uh, our pass through taxes, uh, related, um, for the tax increment that used to go to the RDA, uh, we got a revised estimate. So those are decreasing approximately a hundred five thousand. Sales tax, uh, continues to perform well. So our current estimates, uh, that we've received are an increase of approximately a million dollars. And in here, there's the half cent tax safety. And I just want to point out this is different from Measure R. This is, uh, part of the state's portion of the sales tax. There's a, a half cent that goes to local agencies for public safety. So this is that portion that has a minor increase. And the intergovernmental is increasing approximately one point four million. And that's mostly, uh, related to recognizing the ARPA funds because we plan on, um, the expenditures hitting in fiscal year twenty three for items that have been approved. And overall, um, our outlook is the general fund revenue is going to increase roughly two point three million. Uh, and the year end projection is twenty two point four million roughly. Uh, looking at expenditures, again, these are just the, the, um, groups that have an increase. Uh, the first one is the, our elected group, uh, and the change is an increase of twenty five thousand. And that's made up of five thousand for, uh, council meeting, live streaming contract. Roughly six thousand for a true up for the military banner program and, uh, youth commission budgets that weren't carried forward, uh, from prior years that we found. So we're going to true those up because those amounts should have been carried forward. Uh, and the remainder is, uh, almost fifteen thousand. And that's related to, uh, benefits. Some of that's, uh, updating our, uh, budget system for changes through open enrollment and then other salary and benefit changes that councils approved. And the elected, uh, group is made up of city council, the elected clerk and the city treasurer. Uh, moving on to administration, uh, there's proposed a hundred thirty eight thousand dollar increase. And that is, uh, comprised of eight thousand, uh, for HR for replacement of computer and ergonomic equipment. Thirty thousand dollars for the CM to provide funding for the Measure Q related expenditures. That went through, uh, before the, the measure was adopted. So we use the city manager contingency funds. So that would approve, uh, an appropriation for those. Uh, and then there's one hundred thousand, six hundred three dollars for salary and benefit increases. Um, and just for note, the admin group, uh, includes the city manager, the clerk administrator, IT, HR and economic development. Uh, and finance, we're proposing a seventy thousand, five hundred forty four dollar increase. Um, that includes, uh, fifty thousand dollars for, um, um, software and, and vendors. Uh, one of them is roughly twenty thousand dollars to get an automated timesheet system. So that would allow staff to fill out their timesheets, uh, on a computer and they would automatically feed into our accounting system versus the, right now we have paper timesheets. So some people are nice and fill them out in Excel and print them out. And some of them are handwritten. And then someone in finance has to key all of those into our, our software. So that'll be, uh, a large time savings and should help expedite the process and make sure we don't have any delays of people getting paid. Uh, and then there's an additional thirty thousand for pension and OPEB forecasting. So that would help us create a, a policy of how we fund those, uh, more detailed and, and timely estimates. And, uh, they would also include the actuarial evaluations that we need for both the pension and OPEB reporting every fiscal year. And then moving on to police, there's, um, roughly seven hundred ninety thousand increase. And there is roughly thirty three hundred for, uh, social service archive. Almost twenty five thousand for expenditures related to the tobacco grant program. So we would receive offsetting revenue for that. And, uh, seven hundred fifty eight thousand for salary and benefit changes. And I wanted to point out, um, a lot of the salary and benefit changes are related to the salary schedules that were previously approved by council, uh, through the MOU processes. And those are, uh, included a separate budget appropriation to fund those. Uh, but as we're getting ready for the mid-year budget, we realized it was going to be a lot more efficient to update it and do it all at once. So it looks like there are some huge payroll increases in some of these, but those are for the MOU items that were already approved. So those would be superseded by this. So it wouldn't happen twice. This was just an easier way to get all those costs out to the department level instead of how they were previously reported by fund. Uh, for community development, uh, there's a proposed one hundred forty six thousand dollar increase. Uh, and sixty five thousand of that is allocated to the housing element project, uh, which is offset by grant revenues. Eight thousand dollars for publication of new development and law changes. And their portion of the salary benefit changes is roughly seventy three thousand. For public works, the proposed increase is two hundred forty seven thousand roughly. And that includes forty four thousand, uh, related to operations. Uh, and some of those are increased fuel costs, telecommunications, reimbursable services. Uh, and those are items that the city pays for certain items upfront and then developers reimburse us for those. So that would just show a, a higher, um, amount of transactions going through that in the current fiscal year. Uh, and then HVAC repairs for city related facilities. Uh, it also includes a forty five thousand dollar decrease related to tools and equipment and certain capital reductions. So those are projects that we've looked over that were rolled over and we're not planning to complete those in the current fiscal year. So we're going to remove those from the budget for now. Um, and then the public works portion of the salary and benefit changes is roughly two hundred fifty thousand. And the final category shown here is non-departmental, uh, and that's showing a seven hundred ninety eight thousand dollar increase. Roughly two hundred and seventy thousand are one-time salary payments that were, um, approved as part of the MOU and salary schedule adoption. Uh, and there's roughly two hundred sixty four thousand increase in insurance services. Uh, and those are increased costs that get passed to us through, uh, our insurance JPA that we're a part of. And non-departmental, there's also roughly a hundred thirty four thousand, uh, removing capital carry forward that as we reviewed it, we're not planning to complete in the current fiscal year. Um, and there's also increase in transfer to other funds to cover increases in those. So it's roughly a hundred and eighty two thousand for Parks and Recreation. And then for the lighting and landscape districts or funds, uh, that's almost a hundred thirty two thousand. And then I mentioned this earlier, looking at the Parks and Recreation Fund, uh, there's that public works engineering and that's the direct charge, um, when we do the time surveys for public work admin engineering for supporting capital projects and, and other items that they support in the Parks and Recreation. And so that one is actually showing a decrease of roughly fifteen hundred dollars. In admin, that's roughly a six thousand dollar increase. Uh, parks maintenance is almost a five thousand decrease. Uh, recreation is roughly a hundred and twelve thousand increase. The aquatic center is roughly forty two thousand increase. The Galt market is almost twenty six thousand decrease. Uh, after school program is roughly twenty one thousand increase. Uh, city tots is roughly twenty nine thousand increase. And the SOR program is roughly forty five hundred dollar increase. Uh, the majority of these increases are also, uh, related to the salary schedules that have been approved. And also some change in operations, uh, for copier and various COVID supplies and other operational needs. Looking at Measure R, uh, we're projecting an additional three hundred ninety one thousand for the Measure R sales tax, the half cent sales tax and, uh, a decrease of two hundred nineteen thousand. Uh, and that's related to, uh, just changes in personnel from when the original budget was approved, uh, to what we've occurred so far in the fiscal year and what we're projecting for the end of the fiscal year. And then at the end, there's just some overall charts. And I, I broke these out so you can, they're a little larger and you can see them. Uh, for revenue, we went over general fund, uh, gas tax is a small change. Uh, there's roughly two hundred five thousand decrease in the water fund and that's related to the new rates that are approved. Uh, so the theory is there's a, a lower charge for the, so many units of water that you use. So they're projecting that people will use less water, uh, before they hit the, the higher rates at the larger cap. Uh, we went over Parks and Recreation, uh, wastewater and just updating the rates and our current projections. That's, uh, roughly three hundred ninety eight thousand increase. Uh, intergovernmental streets is almost two hundred and fifty thousand increase and that's related to, um, a grant program. And then capital acquisition is a thirty thousand increase. Uh, and then the lighting and landscape districts, those have an increase that's offset by, um, or that revenue is the, the general fund transfer to those funds to cover increase in costs. Uh, Measure R is the increase in sales tax. And the decrease in solid waste is to reflect the new, um, agreement we have with Cal Waste. So that's almost a two hundred forty thousand dollar decrease. Uh, so citywide, the year end projections show an increase of three point four million dollars. And then looking at the expenditure totals and summary, uh, we went over the general fund increase of two point two million. Uh, the gas tax is a decrease of three point nine or three hundred eighty eight thousand. And that's related to, um, capital projects that have been deferred. The major ones, we went over Parks and Recreation, wastewater is a decrease for deferred projects. Intergovernmental streets is the two hundred forty nine thousand dollar increase related to the grant program. Um, the Sacramento Transportation Authority is a five hundred thousand dollar decrease related to deferred projects. Measure R decrease we went over. And solid waste, there's, uh, projected to have a slight increase, which I believe is mostly related to, um, salary and benefits that were approved. Uh, you have any questions on proposed budget changes or?
Matt, where would you, I, I'm struggling to find the, uh, and maybe it's not in here, but, um, in itemized, Parks and Rec, um, is there anything in here that we, that was provided for us that itemizes out? Uh, like, you know, you have the summaries of what the bumps have been, the adjustments, but is there anything that breaks it down? I'm looking for specifics like on the revenues.
Uh, specifics on the revenues?
Yeah.
So there's a hundred and eighty one thousand increase in, um, general fund contribution for increases. And, uh, the difference between the total and that, I think, was they looked at the different fees and, and programs and.
Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, do we, do we, were we presented with anything that gets down into the weeds on that? Uh, as far as like, um, you have?
The charts in previous report, in the previous report?
So part with, uh, the budget document, we don't have a breakdown of what individual fees or programs we're projecting an increase.
Okay.
We're just showing overall for Parks and Rec, um, the revenues we projected to go up roughly eighty thousand. And then the transfer in from the general fund was a hundred and eighty one thousand.
I can, like, like the mayor said, I can find what I probably what I'm looking for exactly in, in the, uh, in the financial report. I guess it does, I don't know. I need to find it in here. I was just curious of the, uh, I, maybe I should ask. I was just curious if, maybe if you don't have it, I can find it. But the revenue from the billboard for Parks and Rec, I was just wondering if we got that finally corrected? Because I know last time there was a shortfall on what we were promised and it was, do you recall was?
Yeah, I believe that was corrected. I think there was a timing issue of when items got posted. Because I think we get roughly a hundred thousand dollar a year minimum and then more depending on how many ads they sell. So there was a timing issue when we either received the payment or it was posted. But I know, um, that was trued up. So we're receiving the, the correct amount for those revenues.
Okay, that's all I had. And again, I can find that. Thank you.
Is there any other comment? For me personally, you know, I, I like this report. It gives a more, well, it's a higher global view and it's something I'll probably reference multiple times. And I'm sure I'll, well, hopefully, I, maybe not hopefully. Hopefully I won't ask you any more questions, but, uh, I certainly will be looking over these next, these H one and H two repeatedly because I, I want to be sound when I, you know, make further decisions in the future. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, if there's no other, uh, council comments or questions?
I do, I do. I have a couple, just real quick.
Absolutely.
So, um, what we're looking at is just basically, uh, what you projected and what the actuals were and what those adjustments are. This doesn't, this, this, our approval of this tonight doesn't, to be, just to clarify, doesn't have, doesn't mean that this is a locked in. There'll be adjustments moving forward. If we approve something next month, uh, or something changes, those will be adjustments we'll see in the next time this is presented to us, right? This is not like, we're not approving, because the reason I ask this is because I know recently we did a, you know, we had a, we approved the new, um, spending increases for staff. And so for me, because of those spending increases were, were given, the budget is, is, takes another little bit higher level of importance to me to look at what's being budgeted to spend. Because now that once those, once that's approved, then those are, can be spent without coming back to us. So I want to look at those more closely. But this is not that.
So.
This is just adjustments.
Correct. And that, this has the projections for the current year for, um, the previously approved salary increases. So those are built into here. So if you approve this tonight, the amounts that we're showing for the year end projections would become your new revised budget. And then any, uh, budget items that council approves after that would be added to the revised budget.
Right. So this is, this is a, so just like, uh, just like you always tell us, Mr. Heinz, this is a fluid document. Okay, just want to clarify that.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of timestamping it, I guess. Yeah? So, uh, with that, do I have a, a motion to approve, uh, H two as presented? Do I have to read?
No, you can just say approve the resolution as presented.
Can I, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? I so move.
Second.
Move by the Mayor Vandenberg, second by Councilman Lozano. May I have a real call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you to staff for all the hard work. It was, it's nice to see it clean. And with that, we move on to, uh, communications.
None this evening.
Then item J, City Clerk's Report, uh, Public Safety Committee Appointment.
So tonight, uh, Vice Mayor Sandu, uh, has an appointment as, uh, for a community member to the Public Safety Committee to fill a vacant position with a term ending December two thousand twenty six. As you know, due to the November election, Vice Mayor Sandu has an appointment to the Public Safety Committee. The city clerk's office posted the vacancy on social media, on the city's website. And one application was received from Kira Deep Sandu, who meets the required qualifications. So, Mr. Sandu?
Uh, uh, thank you. Uh, that's the only applicant we have? You know, before I appointed, I just want to make a clarification with the public and with the staff. Uh, she's not my nearest relative. She's not my family member. And Sandu is a very popular last name. So she well do good. I do have the interview with her. So I would like to appoint her on that, uh, safety committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
And does that require a real call vote?
No, it's Vice Mayor's appointment.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you. With that, we move on to K, Communication by Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to start off by letting you all know that I've been invited by the, um, chief, can you help me out here? The, the, the California Chiefs, I forget the, the names?
You have a California Police.
Yes.
Yes.
California Police Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Yes, I've been invited by the California Police Chiefs Association to sit on a panel as part of their executive education. So I'll be representing our city as well as, I believe Sacramento will be their, their CM as well as the CM from Citrus Heights. So I just wanted to let you know. So I'm, I'm pretty flattered and looking forward to it. So let's start with our Parks Director, Armando Solis.
No, thank you.
Director Boring, anything else for the good of the group?
That's it. Thanks for staying awake and listening to all the numbers tonight.
Very good, very good. Community Development Director Craig Hoffman?
Sure, members of the council. Recently, there was an article in the Sacramento Business Journal about Liberty Ranch. They just recently refinanced that project with a new investment partner. So it came up that there was a $51 million transfer or new transaction that took place. So they've reallocated that project. And the other article said that there were going to be 1,400 houses that are just going to pop up tomorrow. That's not going to happen, but it's an interesting article. We anticipate that they should begin rough grading of the site April 15th. They've got a lot of work ahead of them, a lot of off-site infrastructure that they need to complete. Their first phase of the development is for what would be 325 housing sites. We anticipate that once they start rough grading, they should start with the actual site improvements with infrastructure later this year. I would anticipate maybe start to see some houses popping up March, April of 2024, but it'd be first phase and so no, there won't be 1,400 houses popping up overnight. And that's it. Thank you.
Just for, if public ask when this starts popping up overnight?
Yeah.
This is all, everything that's been pre-approved, it's gone through all the processes, it's just taken them several years to actually pull the trigger to build the homes, correct? So?
Correct. The project was originally approved back in 2016, so they're starting, again, there's 325 homes. It's going to be broken up, I believe, into six villages. So we'll, next approvals, I think the public would see before the Planning Commission would be architectural approval of the actual houses.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hoffman, could you give us a quick update on the, the, is it the Dry Creek Oaks over behind the golf course? I've had people ask me about the roadway improvements and I know that's kind of, do we have any?
I'd have to turn that over to Mike.
Sorry, Mike. You're next anyways, right? Or you already went?
I'll state a couple of things, and I'm going to look at the city engineer. He's been working with them more directly. But quickly, on Bossell Road, those improvements are still pending. That's part of their off-site work, if you will. And the big thing is, is they have their sewer connection that they need to complete. And there, so there's some improvements to a lift station, sewer lift station. That's, that's really the critical path right now. The roadway, typically paving, you want to wait until the temperatures tend to be warmer. We have seen some good weather lately, but usually I have to plant ahead and there has to be a hot plant, you know, an asphalt plant that's operating. And so it's a little early for that yet, so I think, you know, you're probably going to be waiting another, well, I don't know, month or so maybe, so, depending on weather, of course, so. But that's where that's at. I know they've started building, I don't know how many permits they've pulled, Craig, is it in the 30s or so? Okay, so somewhere between 20 and 30 permits, so. John, anything else that I missed or?
And then while you're there, real quick, and just, because it just dawned on me, somebody posted today asking about the A Street where they're building the new, the storage unit thing?
Yeah.
They had to tear up the road and all that. They were asking, do we know, are they done in the road and when, when can we see those, the roadway kind of finished off?
Yeah, I'm going to look at, John, do you have any info? Yeah, we don't have.
Okay, if you could just email the council, that'd be great. Then I could pass that on to citizens they're asking. Thank you.
I think it's going to be a similar situation. Anytime you're looking at paving, it's a little early seasonally yet for that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Director Selig, while you're up there?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
All righty, let's go with Chief Kalanowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On Saturday, we'll be having our coffee with the law. So we'll have you at the coffee shop on Fourth Street. From 9:30 to noon. Also, I felt like probably Councilmember Lozano was lonely sitting on the Tax and Revenue Tax, or the Revenue and Taxation Committee for the League of Cities. So I've been appointed by Cal Chiefs to serve on that committee, so I'll see you there anyways. So Galt will be well represented. And furthermore, the question was asked again about animal services. That item will be on the March 7th agenda. And just to clarify, there was delays in getting a contract through county council. There was not delays and the full service contract will be bringing back to council to consider on March 7th. So I just want to clarify that piece. So I know there's some concerns about service and so on, but it is a full service contract. The delay was a change in methodology that the county undertook and was successful in doing, which is positive for the city. So more to come, and you'll see that in your next agenda packet as soon everything goes as planned. And then lastly, I don't remember if this came out or not, but our Pop Officer Jeff Selvi, who's working overtime protecting us tonight, has been working hard on the homelessness issues. We've engaged with the county on the social worker, and so three times, they've assigned a social worker down here to assist the department to help identify some folks, if any, that could benefit from the services that they provide. We understand that there'll be a more permanent placement coming forward, and so hopefully I'll have something to report further on that and actually perhaps even introduce the individual. But this really is the county reshuffling and triaging countywide issues to get somebody here. It's not, we're really, you know, taking somebody from somewhere else and getting them here to Galt. So hopefully that will be a long-term solution, but we, it is a funded item that we don't pay for, the county does pay for, and they want to have that person here full-time. It's just a struggle getting enough qualified staff to serve the countywide issues. So hopefully we'll have more on that, but I know they've been working with Officer Selvi and the rest of our staff, and she was, has been well-received by the organization. So hopefully we can have some movement on those who desire to be other than homeless in the community. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Very hopeful report on both accounts. Thank you so much.
Stephanie Van Stein, our Human Resources Director. Okay, no comment there. City Attorney, City Clerk? All right. And one more thing to add, we, actually a couple more things. We met with the owners of the St. Martin Shopping Center. We are meeting with them every two weeks to discuss issues that are going on over there. They have been very receptive and very cooperative, and I just wanted the council to know that that's, that's success, that's a success so far. Regarding our cannabis research, we are, we came up with a plan about a month ago, and I am going down the plans, and we're working on surveys right now. And so I'm working with a contractor, and as we get that going, we'll be moving down that land, that plan systematically, and I do have your request, your requests, sir, so you'll be hearing from me on that. Other than that, Mayor Vandenberg, members of the Galt City Council, that's all for staff comments unless I forgot somebody. I don't think I did.
Thank you, sir. With that, we move to L, Comments by City Council Members, Future Agenda Items. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, thank you for the staff for hardworking. Thank you for the public comment, and thank you for the agents came to this council meeting. Thank you. I did attend a couple events. I attended the Galt Police Department Award Ceremony. Congratulations all the recipients, and thank you for all, the whole department for your service to keep our community safe. I also attended St. Martin Foundation this past Friday to raise funds for the transitional housing project in Agro at this time, but they may be moving to Galt. I also attended Chamber Luncheon last on, I think on 19, and there's a bell attended. Thank you for, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papino?
Wasn't a question, so I didn't bring it up earlier, but it's worth noting that in our report, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded Galt the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's probably a first. And based on the current performance reviewed tonight, that's probably going to result in yet another one. So thank you, guys, for the great work, and congrats on the award.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Yeah, I also attended the PD Award Ceremony, and it was a very, very nice ceremony. Congratulations to everybody who was honored there, and thank you, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, for all of you doing what you can to keep our city safe. I attended the St. Martin's Foundation fundraiser. That was very well attended for the first time ever, having a fundraiser. They sold out, they had a waiting list, which was phenomenal. And, and then a couple, a couple, maybe future agenda items I wanted to ask about. One is, and maybe, and I guess I could just, maybe you could just respond to the council in an email, Mr. Hines, but I just thought of it right now when we were looking at the budget stuff. Do you have any, any estimation on when you think we can, we'll start seeing any kind of budget proposal coming out of either Finance or Parks and Rec about the Measure Q monies? I know there's, we're going to, at some point, have to start deciding how to start, you know, planning to spend those dollars, do you know?
Understood. We won't see those dollars until April. So we'll, we're actually working on a plan between Finance, Parks, Public Works, and myself. And we plan to present that probably in the second meeting in March. So there's a couple of things I need to work out, a couple more consultants I need to chat with.
Okay.
Can I add that they're going to start collecting the tax in April, and they won't actually remit anything to Galt until around June?
Okay.
That's when we'll start receiving the, the funds?
Thanks, Matt.
Good to know, thanks. And so the other item was, and this is something, and I'm just going to apologize to Armando in advance because we talked about this way back, and I just, it's been coming back to me, and, and, and I had a long discussion with somebody today about it, and I just think I would like to see it come back. It's just, in the future agenda, it's no rush at all. I don't, you know, I know we got a lot of more important things, but I'm trying to figure out how to keep this short without making a discussion item. There has been a lot of talk about the, the bags at the market. We're talking about the one-time-use peel-off bags today because of the wind. They're literally licking people's trees. And it's, I know we have a team that goes out and deploys and picks up that, but I've had people coming to me. It's becoming a real epidemic, and I would like to have an agenda, I'm going to come back, or the council could maybe weigh in on what we could do about not having those at the market and looking at alternatives. And I don't want to go into any more than that, but it's something I did mention to Mr. Solis. At some point in the future, it'd be nice if we could have an agenda, and we can, maybe I can give a little more detailed description to you, Mr. Hines, offline, about what I'm, what I think the discussion would consist of, and then you can figure out if you can put out an agenda. Is that something that the council would consider at least having a discussion about?
There you go. I actually think it's important, it's been a source thought for citizens. It's not going to go away, so I'd rather try to address it. Anybody else? That makes three.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I won't repeat all the events, but, but I will say that the police awards ceremony was done very well, as always, and so thank you to the police department and the staff that did that. And the St. Martin event, the spaghetti was awesome. And if you didn't go for anything else, go for the spaghetti next year. Again, I won't go through all the other events, but I do want to bring an item back, and again, this is, it could be six months down the road, but, yeah, I was thinking as we've recognized several of our citizens with proclamations and things like that, that we don't really have a program to honor and recognize citizens that have made an impact in our community in a distinguished, distinguished fashion. Something similar to like a K to the City program? And so what I would ask for is for some support, and I, and I'm willing to work on this with staff and, and the mayor even, about bringing something like that forward to our city. We all can think of that one person in our mind that was an Olympic medalist or was, you know, served 44 years to the South County, that might be eligible for something like that. And so I would like to bring that back. Again, it doesn't have to be anytime soon, but just a way to honor citizens in our community that had, have had an impact, or maybe even served in a significant military fashion. And then one last one category, maybe somebody that's turned 100 years old in our community. But it's just a way for us to give back, I think. And so I would ask for, like I said, support from the council to, to bring something back like that.
Just to clarify, Councilman Lozano, like, this would be kind of something more up and above, over like what the Community of Character Coalition, they do and stuff, this is kind of another level?
Yeah, this would be more like a, if, the way I think of it is more of like a lifetime achievement recognition as opposed to an ongoing.
I would support that. I think it's a nice way to help connect with the citizens and recognize, you know, people that deserve it.
Sure. I would, I would be in support of looking.
Yes. Okay, and I'll, and I'll work, like I said, I'll work with the staff and, and mayor on, on what that looks like, and we can bring it back whenever it's appropriate. Doesn't have to be right away.
Thank you, sir. For myself, I attended the St. Martin Foundation. You know, there was comments, and several times there've been comment, public comments about the homeless problem, and this is a group that's stepping up to help solve it. It takes a lot of fortitude and a lot of effort to do such a thing. I'm really hopeful that they can provide benefits to people that choose it. It's, it's really good. I also attended the police awards. It was very nice. I had some great conversations. I thank you for that. It was, it was a very well, I was very pleased with it. And then finally, and during public comment, Madison brought up the request to bring up, to put the chamber as an agenda item. So I would ask support from my fellow council members to do that. I think one of the most important things we do here is listen, so I would like to hear what they have to say. So do any of my council members support that?
Yeah, so just for clarification, would this be for them to come with a presentation that they've been refining on the Visit Galt initiative?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, if that's, if they have a sufficiently developed proposal that they'd like to, to bring forward, I think that that would be fine. I don't know if two weeks is.
Did I mischaracterize that? Thank you. So you also support that, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That makes three.
Yeah, I, I think it would be important, just to make comment, before we, before we get to a point where we start discussing the ARPA money again, I would like to see that so that we can have time to consider it. So, yeah.
Thank you. With that, I adjourn the meeting at 8:08.